Could you do OMS conferences, Dan? Or are you dropping in on Wednesday?
I'm gonna have to tomorrow.
They said, Chris, they said anywhere from probably closer to $30,000.
And I have to pick up my elementary.
No. So that we didn't have to come back.
I love the drop-in. I have my preference, but also wanted to meet the other.
I have, Wednesday night, I have at Lincoln.
How about some spot where we're?
The conference.
And I don't know, I mean, without them being here.
It all done.
Shouldn't give us a ballpark.
I didn't know about my kids. I was on my brother's side.
Feel like I really don't.
Whoever it was.
Yeah, but if you look at, what is this? So, they were at 120,000, they were 130,000. Sprint Turf had low.
Good for you. I can tell. Tell.
I have a seven o'clock meeting this morning and I forgot it was my meeting to run and I was like, oh, I meant to make all those copies last night.
Better get in and get organized.
Just from our business.
He looks fine. I don't think he's fine. He looks like there's an airplane window by him.
Hell, this is probably the best.
Are you in Uber or not? Where are you?
But they're doing something at KU too, right?
Okay. That looked like an airplane window by his face.
America is a good company and they've got a good bid. They'll be good for us.
Don't drive him both.
I was just expecting. Yep. Yep. Yeah.
What did it say?
No, they didn't.
It's just like the last. People would be good in it more.
All right, good evening everyone and welcome. It is March 9th at 7:00 PM and we are here for the USD 290 School Board Meeting. We have six members physically here and we have one here virtually. So if you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You all have been presented with an agenda and I am requesting an amendment at this time to include a report from Dr. Cobb's regarding processes USD 290 has in place to manage current and potential health, public health issues. While he's kept the board very informed, I requested that he be ready to provide a verbal report should the rest of the board agree that in light of recent increasing public concern that this should be addressed on our agenda tonight. So if there is a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment or without?
So moved.
With, with or without?
With.
Okay, second.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the agenda with the amendment and we'll put that amendment down under.
6.02, yeah. I'll put it in right now.
Uh, 6.03?
6.02.
6.02, okay, perfect. Raise your right hand. And that passes 7-0. You all have been provided with a consent agenda. Dr. Cobb's, is there anything you'd like to review on that for us?
Um, no, it's all normal stuff.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 7-0 as well. We do not have any comments from the public tonight, but we certainly welcome everyone that is here. First order up for business tonight, Greg Varenberg will present to the board on some refinancing options and ask for the authority to further finalize these options and we will be taking some action on this tonight.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Greg Varenberg with Raymond James and also wanted to introduce Rich Bartow from our firm. Pleased to be here this evening and share some good news with you regarding the bond refinancing. But it's interesting when you look and wanted to go through the results of the refinancing, what's been happening in the bond market. You've probably heard some of the news in the stock markets and the financial markets. But then also wanted to walk through the steps for completing the refinancing from where we're at currently. But it's interesting, when I took a look back at where we had started this process and our first refunding analysis that we ran was on July 9th of last year. And that's about the time we started to see rates decline and they really accelerated lower in August. But oddly enough, the savings at that time really wasn't a savings. It would have been a loss of about $2.6 million. So obviously it didn't make sense to consider refinancing at that point in time. But then, just one month later, it had changed to where it had gone from a negative $2.6 million to a positive 4.1 million. So had a very sharp drop in rates. All of a sudden, the savings moved up to a level that really caught our attention. And then, we saw a drop in rates in August. They moved back up in September and really stayed higher from September through December. The savings that we ran on September 27th, it had fallen from 4.1 million to 1.4 million. So you could see how quickly that savings kind of came and went. Still positive, but just not quite at a level that made sense on a percentage of the bonds being refinanced. But then, we came into 2020, we came into the year with a 10-year treasury at a 1.92%. It hit 1.44 briefly in August. And the update is, some of you may remember from the board meeting in January, we showed two different scenarios when I had met with you on the 13th. We had one where we kept the 20-year repayment schedule and that had savings of about $2,222,000. And then, we also showed a scenario where we'd shorten it up by several years, shorten the repayment schedule to 15 years and that had about 6.3 million in savings. But what has happened since then is we've had a very dramatic move in interest rates and a lot of it was driven by the concern over the coronavirus. That 10-year treasury was at 1.92% when we came into this calendar year. The previous record low was 1.32%. We quickly moved through that 1.32%, set a new record low. And I thought, well, we're at a new record low level. It's, you know, be amazing if it went further down, but it really has continued to drop significantly every day. And briefly, today, it hit 0.38%. So all the way down from 1.92%. And if you go back a year and a half ago, it was 3.3%. So really dramatic move in rates. A lot of that is fear over what is going to happen in the world economy and investors just wanting to park their money in something safe and buying, you know, bonds or US Treasury bonds. So the timing of the refinancing, I think, has worked out very well for the district. The, two things to keep in mind.
Excuse me, could you step just a little bit closer to the mic?
Sure. Okay, I'm sorry. Is that better?
We want to hear all the good news. Thank you.
Okay. And it is good news, so I want to make sure you can hear that. Sorry about that. Is that better?
Yeah.
So when we sell a refunding bond issue, we're dealing with two sets of interest rates and I know that sounds a little bit unusual. We have one interest rate that we're selling the new bonds, the, we'll set your new payment schedule on the bond issue. But the bonds that we're refinancing aren't immediately callable or prepayable. We can't pay them off immediately. And so we take the proceeds of the new bond issue, put that into an escrow fund and the escrow fund is invested until that first prepayment date for the outstanding bonds. And so we want your long-term bond rate to be as low as possible. We want that investment rate inside the escrow fund to be as high as possible. And as we were working towards finalizing the numbers last week, the Federal Reserve announced that they were cutting short-term interest rates by 50 basis points. And we knew that that would reduce the interest rate in the escrow fund. So we moved pretty quickly to preserve the ability to use interest rates on that day that the Federal Reserve cut rates. There's a program through the Bureau of Public Debt where you can buy treasury securities and they set the rates every morning and we knew if we waited one more day that those rates would be down about a half a percent. So we locked in that higher investment rate for the escrow fund and that proved to be a pretty good move because rates went down and then they went down further. And we actually had another similar-sized refunding for a school district that we were supposed to complete today and we had to put it on hold because the escrow yields had gotten so low. I know that's getting into a lot of the details, but by taking that action and preserving that rate, it kept the savings, the savings would have fallen by 1.25 million just that one day alone. And then it would have been further reduction in your savings had we waited until today to lock that in. So the numbers that we are presenting this evening, we've gone through a process to identify options for a direct placement of the refunding bonds. We sent out term sheets to 30 to 40 different banks. We had three, and it's a fairly large issue that you're completing, we had three large banks that responded. SunTrust Bank, Capital One Bank, and Raymond James Bank, which is an affiliated company of our firm. And all three came in with interest rates that are very similar to each other. SunTrust Bank had a limitation, they couldn't go 16 years, they could only go 15. Their rates were very competitive. They had proposed an initial rate that would start at a 2.87% and then drop to 2.28% when we get to that call date on your bonds, which allows, when we get to that call date, it can drop to a lower tax-exempt rate. Capital One had proposed a 3% rate, dropping to 2.30. And then Raymond James Bank had proposed 2.8% initial rate, dropping to 2.3% at that call date. And so, Capital One, Raymond James were able to go to the 16-year term. SunTrust couldn't quite get there. And when we ran the 15-year scenario, it just got a little tight on the mill levy for your bond and interest fund. So, and the Raymond James proposal had savings, it was about $500,000 better than what the Capital One proposal would have been. So the numbers that are presented this evening are soon to be finalized. We've got the escrow investment rate piece set and ready to be locked in. The interest rates have been proposed and that's what we're sharing with you this evening. That will all be officially final later this week when we get the internal credit approval from Raymond James Bank. And then also, they will send a term sheet that the district can accept. And so the resolution this evening authorizes you to accept that term sheet, authorizes us to work with your bond attorney, Q-Tech Rock. And Adrian's here this evening, he can answer any questions. But we'll finalize the legal documents after we get all of the numbers completely finalized. But it shouldn't change much from what's presented to you in your board packet this evening. So with that, the highlights of the refunding, the bonds that we're refinancing are the years 2031 through 2040. And it has those, and that's from the series 2015 issue, have an average interest rate of 4.63%. So those are the bonds that we're paying off. And then, the projected savings on the refinancing and the details of the new issue, we end up having an interest rate of 2.54% as the average and it's the combination of those two rates that I had mentioned. So we're dropping the interest rate from 4.63% to 2.54%, which is a reduction of 2.09% or 209 basis points. And we've moved the final payment from 2040 to 2036, so you're paying off the bonds four years earlier. The result of the new interest rate and the new payment schedule ends up being a savings of $9,560,322 and that's over the life of the issue. And all of that is, you know, just fantastic news when I think back to working with you on the bond election and now being able to report this to the taxpayers. But the other thing that is really a nice outcome of this is that the mill levy that would be necessary in the bond and interest fund, currently you're at 19.89 mills and our projections show that you can lower that to 16.5 mills. So that gives you, as a board and a district, a lot of flexibility to look at where do you want the operating fund levies set? Where do you want the total mill levy of the district to be set? But not only can you shorten up the repayment schedule of the bond issue, but you also have now generated some flexibility in that mill levy in the bond and interest fund and you'll be able to work through that this summer when you work on the budget and see where you want it set and the entire mill levy of the district set. But you do have some flexibility there. So, and then, I may have talked at the January meeting about the level of savings as a percentage of the bonds being refinanced and a lot of issuers will say that if you can get 2%, 3%, 5% present value savings percentage, then it is a refinancing that's worth pursuing. The final present value savings percentage on your issue is 6.77%. So it really stands out as a decent level of savings relative to the amount of bonds being refinanced. So, I'm sorry for that long explanation of how we got here and some of the detail of the interest rate setting. But all of this has been nearly finalized and as I had mentioned, we expect to get formal approval from Raymond James Bank later this week. They will send us the final term sheet. It will match the numbers that we're showing here. There might be some minor modifications as we finalize the sizing of the cost of issuance, but very minor change, if any change at all. And so once we have the numbers finalized, then we would have the board president, through the action that you would take this evening, would be authorized to sign the commitment agreement, which is the agreement between the district and Raymond James Bank as the purchaser. And then, we would come back to the board at its scheduled meeting on March 23rd. And once your bond attorney has a chance to put all of the details into a bond resolution, the bond resolution is really the one governing document that has all of the details of the new issue, the payment dates, the interest rates, the amounts. And we'll have the board, the last step you would take is the adoption of that bond resolution. And so at that point, everything would be final and we would work towards a closing on March 31st. So, I will stop there, but I very much appreciate the chance to help you with the refinancing and hope this is good news and happy to answer any questions.
Greg, before we get to questions, when I was talking to Adrian today, we had talked about having a special meeting on the 18th or the 19th, and maybe I missed it and all of that, but you talked about meeting on the 23rd. Do we need to do something on the 18th or the 19th to finish this up?
Yeah, I think, you know, our goal would be is to wrap this up with as least disruption for the district and the board as possible. The one item that we talked about this afternoon with Adrian and Tyler is the closing on March 31st. Will that allow enough time for the Attorney General's Office to review all of the legal documents? And I think here, where we should be able to have everything finalized, maybe we'll have the numbers finalized by the end of this week, we can start working on some, or Tyler and Adrian can start working on some of the final legal documents and we can send over a transcript to the Attorney General's Office in advance of the 23rd meeting and let Rich Smith at the AG's office know, the only thing that's going to change is we'll send you signature pages after the meeting on the 23rd. So I think, if that plan will work, and I don't want to speak for Adrian or Tyler, but I think that would help us avoid having to have a special meeting. Okay, great. We can do it.
Adrian, you have any?
I have a question.
Just a second. Adrian Sreen with Q-Tech Rock. Dr. Cobb's, that's 100% right. Just to second what Greg had said, we don't anticipate any problems with the timing. And that's a development that occurred after we had that conversation this afternoon. But, yeah, we think it, we think it's going to be plenty of time to get the transcript out of the AG and then have them approve it and be ready to close on the 31st.
Okay, great. I do want to tell both of you, I know that you've done an enormous amount of work. I've been on the phone with both of you multiple times over the course of the last few weeks and I truly appreciate, I think when we started down this path, Terry and I were excited about $3 million. When we, when we really talked in August and we thought that maybe there was a time that we missed our window and what were we going to do? And here we are, talking about a savings to our community of almost $10 million and that is substantial and certainly I appreciate the work that all three of you have put in on this project and taking care of us, as you've always done, Greg. I appreciate you very much. So thank you both for all the work that you've done.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
I'll just make a comment. I think this is absolutely positively exciting that we're gonna save nine and a half million dollars by refinancing.
Yep.
I had a couple of questions and it's probably, I just missed it. What was the savings difference between the Capital One and the Raymond James? I know you said the percentages, but did you state what the savings?
It was about a half a million dollars difference. I think Capital One was close to about 9 million total. Raymond James was about 9.5 million. And the SunTrust proposal had similar level of savings, but the problem we ran into there, and they had a slightly higher initial rate, but then they had a, all of the proposals had about 2.28, 2.3% final rate. But the problem was that if we compress it into 15 years, then we thought that it might put more pressure on that bond, mill levy in the bond and interest fund. And so we really were trying to find a way to not have to shorten it to 15 years. Now, this issue will have a call feature to where if you get into year 15 or 14 and say that you've got a fund balance in the bond and interest fund and you won't pay off the bonds early, then you can go ahead and save some additional interest just by paying them off a year or two early. But we didn't want to wind things too tight with the 15 years, we kind of ruled that scenario out. But it was about a half a million difference in the other two proposals.
Okay. And then, the cost of issuance, is that include, like, that has been taken out in the 9.5 or is that deducted from the 9.5?
Yeah, a good question. I should have touched on that because that question comes up quite a bit. The 9.5 million savings is net savings, it's after all cost of issuance have been paid. You're not contributing any cash to the refinancing, so we're not depleting any cash position. And that 9.5 million is the actual amount that you will save over the life of the issue.
Excellent. And then I promised this last one.
No, that's good. I like the questions.
And then, on the, when you put the funds, the payment into the escrow fund that you mentioned, is there a risk on that or is our amount protected?
That's also a very good question. And it, and so when, and as you can imagine, once we put that in the escrow fund, it's very important that we make sure that, to the penny, that all of the bonds that we're refinancing will be paid out of that escrow fund and it doesn't come back to the district. And so when we do a, this is called an advanced refunding, when we do an advanced refunding, we're required to submit our calculations to a CPA firm. They verify our calculations and they will provide a report to the district and to Q-Tech Rock as bond counsel, saying that they certify that the money going in the escrow fund is adequate to make all remaining payments, including the interest that would be earned inside of that escrow fund. And then, Q-Tech Rock will provide a defeasance opinion saying, based upon the numbers, based upon the CPA report, that the old bonds are defeased, they're no longer an obligation of the district, they're now paid from the escrow fund. So that would be a very big problem if we ever had to come back and say, we miscalculated, you need to come up with some extra money. So those are the steps that we go through to make sure that that can't happen.
I'm happy. I'm sorry.
And I, I was speaking for Adrian, I don't know if he was disagreeing behind me or not, but.
Thank you.
Just so, for people that may be watching or hear this, I think it's important to the public, how many years are we cutting off, not only saving nine and a half million, but we're knocking off, how many years?
Four years. Four years. With really the opportunity of bending on where our bond and interest funds are at the end of year 15, or at the end of year 14, to really look at what year 15 would look like, we'll have some flexibility there. But again, what Greg was talking about is by going 16 years, we've given ourselves some flexibility. If in the span of those 16 years, there's any type of the R-word hitting or anything that begins to impact the revenue that comes, and so this gives us, if all things stay great, then we'll have some opportunity to reduce that even more. If we have some rougher waters, then this gives us the flexibility to maneuver those rough waters and get through it without going back to our community and saying, oh, now we need to do this because we need to, we need to meet our requirements within the, within the bond and mill levy.
I think it's good that we have some flexibility with the mill levy too.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's huge for the district.
Any further questions for Mr. Varenberg?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution with Raymond James?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. Up next, we have another action item. Dr. Cobb's is going to present the bids for turf for the football and soccer stadiums.
All right, now we get to talk about something else that's kind of exciting, but not near as exciting, but pretty exciting altogether. We've been having a conversation about turf in our community for probably the better part of six or seven years, certainly all the way back to my days as an assistant principal at Ottawa High School. And at that point, it was just about the football field. The reality of it is, is that we, we had some opportunities because of how the bond issue played out and some things that happened that gave us some capital dollars that we can make some decisions about what we want to do and now have the opportunity to turf not only the football field, but the soccer field as well. And really make our facilities across the district stand out and pop and look fantastic. So, we had an RFP that went out. You all saw, I think, the RFP. And it came back on, I think, March 2nd. And as we opened them, you see what we, what we saw here. I will tell you that every one of these turf companies does a great job. There is, there is not a lot of difference to the layperson when you start taking a look at turf and you can walk on any of those fields and they're all significantly better than what we have now. And I think the reality is, we would be happy with any of those products. When we started taking a look at the values, one of the things that we recognized was one, Mid-America is a known commodity. They've done a lot of different things and you would recognize a lot of the, the turf scenarios that they've put together, including Bill Snyder Family Stadium, some thanks for Sporting KC, some thanks for the Kansas City Chiefs, some thanks for the Jayhawks, a lot of very significant projects in our area. They also came in as the low bid, which was significant for us. If you remember what our, what our, what our area was between, between one and a half and 1.8 million dollars, we came in significantly less than that, which again, as we start talking about flexibility here tonight, gives us some flexibility to do some other things. So our recommendation tonight would be that we go with Mid-America. Mid-America does have a representative here tonight, if anybody's interested in talking with them after the show. But Mid-America's a great company. They provide a great, a great turf product and they do great work in all aspects of their, of their turf preparation. So our recommendation tonight would be that we approve a contract with Mid-America to turf both the soccer and the football field for just over, I think I put it in there, for just over 1.3 million dollars. That includes the shock pad. And then an additional, about $130,000 for some stabilization that we don't really know what we're getting into yet, even though we have Geotech samples from the high school. It's a ways away from the football field and soccer field. We don't really know what we're getting into there, but about $130,000 to play with there for stabilization. Any questions for me or for our friends from Mid-America?
Well, I don't have questions, but when we first started on this journey, I, I was concerned about turf because, you know, from long ago, turf was just basically, you know, the outdoor carpet put down on ground and it wasn't nearly what it is now. But after reading the vast documents that you have sent to us and doing a little research on my own, and also looking at the samples that you have in your office, I think this is going to be a good thing for our students and for their safety. I was mostly concerned about their safety.
There is going to be a lot of benefit to us. First and foremost, we're going to have incredible playing surfaces for our kids. And, and much like we saw the improved and facility, improvement in facilities with our, with our building structures and what it's done to culture and, and how our students respond to, to what's happening in the building, we're going to see some of those same things taking place within our athletic facilities. Our soccer kids have played on turf fields in nearly every other school that they go to and our field is less than great. It's less than great. Our football kids, there was a time 10 years ago when having a grass football field out there really looked great. And it was one of the few grass, and you might remember, Richard Smith was the, was the head of maintenance at the time and I think for two years, maybe we got an award for how great the gra, and it is just an overwhelming prospect to maintain it and do the things that we need to do. And really, we have the opportunity to provide something great, make it look great for our kids, allow our band kids on it every day, allow our PE kids on it every day, allow our middle school kids to go over there and utilize it every day, to allow ORC to utilize it when, when we can do it and really build capacity within our community for utilizing those fields and not create a detriment to the playing surface. All of those things are a huge positive for us moving forward.
Well, also in the drought years that we experienced, we're, we're going to save on some water.
Yes. Now, most turf companies will tell you that it's probably worthwhile to water it a little bit anyways, maintain, but not like, not like we had to. bit anyways, maintain, but not like, not like we had to. Maybe one time a week, throw a little water on it and call it good. Susan, do you have a question?
Timing wise, what would be the?
So we talked to Mid-America, that what we put out in the RFP is a little bit different because I forgot about graduation. So I really thought that we would be able to do some things on the football field early and take care of some things and still take care of our track kids. But the reality of it is, is that we don't want our stadium torn up for, for graduation. So we'll probably start, I think graduation is May 8th. We would start the week after. We, we have some agreements with Ottawa University to take care of our track kids, to take care of our soccer kids, if we need to do some things there at the end of the year. But it would allow us to get started and they, they say they can still get it finished prior to school, starting in August, August 14th, I think, is when we have students return. So we get it done.
You and I talked about this a little bit prior. I just hope that, and I know you said you would have a talk with them, that our 130,000 that, that has us covered on any soil remediation, because you and I know, and I think everybody else does, what some of the remediation costs us on our bond project. So I just hope that's not a two-headed snake.
And, and we'll have some of those conversations and make sure, can Zee nod his head back there like, yeah, is he?
He's listening.
He's trying to hide back there. Now, we'll, we'll make sure, and again, it's, it's, it's something that we don't really know what we're getting into. But I think that when you look at what the other, what the other companies were offering in that area, it's, it's pretty comparable there. So we'll see.
Yeah. I think we'll be fine. I just.
Yeah, I understand. It's always scary. It's always scary when we don't have.
None of us are Superman, so we can't see what's underneath the grass.
Yep.
I had a question, and you may have stated it earlier, and I forgot. How long will this last before we have to do something?
Yep. So typically, we're talking about a 10-year playing service. I can tell you that although it's not, it's not here for tonight, we've already had some conversations about how we might do better. So the, the, the request that we put out there for shock pad was a fairly high-level shock pad. They make some other ones that do the same thing at a significantly less cost. One of the items that we talked about is at some point in time, we really figure out exactly all of the things that go into that, coming back to the board, possibly looking at a change order, putting in that shock pad, changing the turf product that we actually put in that bid, putting something better in there that has another two or three-year life expectancy. I think the one that we talked about that has the little curly stuff on the inside, most, most schools are seeing 12 and 13 years out of it, which would be huge. And so if we can make some of those changes, get a better turf product, not cost us any more money, have some greater longevity, then I think all of those are worthwhile change orders for us to discuss moving forward.
I think a lot of people will say, to answer part of your question, Melidia, is when, once we have the fields down, they don't cost this kind of money to, when they've ran out their life expectancy, because there's so much money spent in everything that you see below the turf. That's where, there's just a lot of cost.
What with the plan, like, do you already have a plan in place, like, as how we would be prepared to pay for that? I don't know what that cost would be.
Yeah. So over the course of the.
Make sure we are going to be able to afford to do whatever we have.
So over the course of the next few years, one, we're not going to spend the things in our, in our budget that we've spent. So no longer are you paying for paint, no longer are you paying for, no longer are you paying for water in the same capacity, no longer are you paying for fertilizer, you're doing a lot of those things there. Within a capital budget, we have the opportunity to roll over some funds and continue to collect. So we can start putting some of those dollars away for a period of time. And like we talked earlier about general fund and not being able to do that, capital's a little bit different. So we can earmark some of those dollars every year to roll over and know that 10 years down the road, we need to have about $400,000 to replace the, to field turf, which would be significantly less than what you're doing at each one of those areas now because of the, the underneath capacity. But we can do that and we can also offset that we don't necessarily have to do them both in the same year. So we can identify that maybe at the end of 10 years, we do one, and at the end of 12 years, we do a different field so that we can offset some of those costs.
I think that Mr. Winkert has a question for us.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just have a comment. I just, for the public is, I support this because we first went out and did the pre-K building Garfield. So of the excess money, we invested in K through three first and came back to turf. And I think that's important to note, that we invested in the pre-K Garfield and now we're coming back and doing the turf. So I think we've handled two major aspects of what we need for our district. So I'm thrilled that we got to do both.
Yep. And I think that is something important to remember here. The initial conversation within the bond would have included that pre-K center and also had some initial conversations about putting turf down as well. The turf was nixed almost immediately as we, as we really identified that, that the bond was about improving our academic spaces for our kids. We took the pre-K out because we were sitting at like an $80 million bond proposal and some things had to be cut. The reality of it is, is that we've done some great job. We've, we've, we've had some people do great work in minimizing our costs, finding great things, finding ways to, to do things together to minimize those costs. And we've been able to bring the pre-K back and still have enough funds left over that we can do some, some other great things for our kids. It really has been the best of both worlds at this point.
Well, and to back up what Harold has said, I mean, to go back a little further, we were able to provide the playgrounds for all the elementary schools. That was questionable when we first began this discussion.
We've really done a lot with the bond funds above and beyond what we said we were going to. And we've provided great spaces for our kids and spaces that our communities can use. All right? I mean, when you start talking about the addition of playgrounds and everybody can use them, you start now talking about turf and, and thinking about that it won't just be for, for high school and middle school kids. These will be things that we can share within our community. That is a huge positive for the Ottawa community overall and something that we're going to get a lot of traction out of, I think.
Sitting here thinking about this, what's awesome about tonight is we're talking about money we've saved and then we're turning around and completing projects that we thought we weren't going to complete. And I feel like this is putting the last final polishing touch on everything. I would just like to add that we also saved by doing the RFP and going out from top to bottom here, over 600,000.
Yep.
So I guess tonight's word of savings is, that's great to the district and community.
Right. The company that we talked about in January, it's like, my, on the math here, like 200-some thousand dollars higher than this bid.
Yes. Yeah. So certainly, we got a great deal of benefit by going through the RFP process. There's no doubt about that.
No, I was just surprised, you know, most, all these people are on the state list. And that we have the separation top to bottom of, on base bid of 600,000 and that's great for us.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Do we have any further discussion on this before someone might like to make a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the turf bids as presented for Mid-America.
I think you're supposed to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Melidia, do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
I didn't know if we needed to put in the amounts.
Oh, well, yeah, thanks. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the contract with Mid-America for $1,327,065 plus up to $130,000 for stabilization. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0?
Thank you all.
That's good. All right.
That's good.
Thank you.
We need a good news today.
Okay, next.
All right, now for some things that should go pretty quickly. I just realized on there that the city of Ottawa does not know that there is an S on my last name, but that'll be all right. Dang it. So neighborhood revitalization, we continue to go through this and this is a huge positive for our district overall. Yes, we lose out on some short-term taxation, but in the grand scheme of things, this is, this is a positive for our community. And the city of Ottawa continues to try to, to work to make our, our, our community more livable and more appealing for, for people to live in. So I think Harold, Harold, do you still sit on the revitalization committee with the city?
Yes.
Yeah. And Harold does a lot of work with this as well. There's certainly great things. So what we're looking for tonight is approval for the revitalization request from the city of Ottawa so they can move forward.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's basically a recommendation out of a committee.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion before we vote? Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we approve this new neighborhood revitalization recommendation for the city of Ottawa. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. And we are moving on to preschool curriculum. And again, we are going to take action on this tonight. Is Mrs. Bybee going to present on this or Dr. Cobb's?
I'll just go ahead and do it so she doesn't have to get up. We, we saw this last time and it was presented to you all. I think that there are, you know, four different quotes and they, they total, I think, like $30,000 or something like that. But they were presented, all of them are needed for us to continue to provide great preschool instruction and all of them with the help of our staff in determining exactly what, what was needed in order for us to continue that great instruction, so.
Madam President, I move we approve the purchase of the preschool curricular materials totaling
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. Thank you. We are on to, we do not need an executive session for personnel tonight. We are down to reports and presentations.
So we need to talk about a retreat, 6.01.
Oh, that's right.
We made an adjustment, so you'll have to update your.
Right. Thank you.
Yep, refresh your page and it'll pop up again. Should be over there. Got it?
Got it. I could read that up there. I could follow along. Yeah.
That was a good one.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Okay, so yeah, 6.01, the retreats.
Yeah, so there's been some discussion about the retreat. I think two weeks ago, I put in the update, a list of five or six dates in April and May, and I've only heard back, I think, from two or three people about what those, what that means.
Sorry. I spaced it.
Yeah. So really, we need to discuss a couple of things. One, Harold made mention in, in his response back that he's good with a board retreat if we're going to learn something, but not, not feeling real great about a touchy-feely retreat. And certainly, and he laughs because he, he's giggling, is that an okay representation of your statement?
That's close.
Yeah. So we really need to identify whether or not we want to do a retreat. If we want to do a retreat, what do we want to get out of the retreat? And if we're going to do it, when are we going to do it? So, you know, we talk a lot about having some discussion. I think the only time we're all going to get together to be able to determine what we want to accomplish here is probably in this session. So here it is on the agenda, and I'll kind of leave it up to you all to, to lead some discussion and conversation about what we want to, if we want to have a retreat and what we would want to accomplish.
What training items are out there that we haven't done? I mean.
You know, so one of the things, I think KASB always offers some, some good things. And I think the more we get into our routine, sometimes the more we need to, to hear what the expectations are, to remind us what our role on the board is, what our role as a superintendent is, what our role in working together is. But with that being said, some of you have been through those things before, some of you feel good about where your knowledge is at. I certainly don't think that it is my place to tell you what your retreat training is going to be. And the purpose of the retreat is for this board to determine what it needs and for me to facilitate that, that process with you. So if we think there is some training that we need, any training that you can think under the sun, KASB will provide to us. There's, there's no doubt about that. If that's not what it is, then we need to, we need to look at some different items and see if there's something different for us to accomplish there.
I can't remember where I heard this, probably CBS Sunday Morning or something like that, but they were talking about this very topic, about boards working together. And they said that the most important thing that a board needed in order to work together was to be able to communicate with one another and not necessarily train for anything specific or come early for yet another three-hour meeting before we continue with our board meeting, but to, to learn about one another, to learn how we all work together and to communicate better. And so I guess communicate would be what I would like to see.
Yep.
I'd agree with that.
That's our second meeting.
Any other thoughts? Harold?
Could you?
And I won't touch you, Harold.
Yes, I think you have things that they could train us on. Could you ever send us out a list and maybe we all, including what Linda just said, add that on there as well? And maybe we pick our top two or three items and send back and you can kind of tally up and say, okay, these are the top two or three items that rose to the top.
Yeah.
Maybe what we could do is, because when you say they could train anything under the sun, you know, my thought of training might be different than Julie's. So maybe what you do is give us a whole let me and we all pick the top three and we go from there.
Yeah. So if I, if I understood, I missed the first part of, of what you said, but if I understood correctly, it was, can KASB provide us a list of, of different training topics and then send it out to you guys and you guys can ultimately identify which ones are most important? We can, I can definitely do that and I can reach out to Brian Jordan and, and part of what I would ask him, instead of just getting a whole list of, of things, there's probably 200 of them on there, but, but maybe to identify some of the things that are most requested for training from the board or for the board and identify some that deal with communication and some that deal with, with specific topics and see what he puts out there and maybe see if he can get me a list of 10 or so, so we can kind of narrow some focus. And if what you guys see out of those 10 is not something that you feel is, is viable, then we come back and we have some different options. There's, there's nothing that says that we have to have a retreat. It's not, it's not like we have a deadline that we're coming up against that says we have to figure out something to do in April or May. We can do this whenever we need to. We can make sure that we get it right and make sure that it's appropriate for our board as we start going through the process. So I, I can definitely do that and get that information out to everybody and then we can make some decisions.
Thank you.
Yep.
You know, I, I think Harold, that's a great idea. And I think a retreat's important. You know, our board has changed. We, we have Melidia now and we really haven't had an opportunity to sit down and communicate and work on something when we haven't been making these big decisions. And just to kind of get to know, you know, where we're coming from, kind of our frame of reference, which really helps whenever we're understanding each other and maybe what our nonverbal or even unspoken meanings are, just so that we understand each other better. And as far as the topics go, you know, even if it's a topic that I've heard before, I always find that I learn something new, you know, each time it's presented. So, you know, I, I'm sure we can all agree on something that we would find beneficial.
I do think.
The idea of choosing.
I do think one of, one of the most important aspects of, of doing some type of retreat is that when, when we have to look at ourselves as a team, there are a lot of things that exist there. If, if we were, we'll go back to, to my days, some people would call them glory days. I don't know that there's a lot of glory in them, but we go back to my days as a baseball player, there was never a time when, when the nine of us just showed up and got on the field. There was weeks of preparation in advance to that and, and things that we had to do together, things that we had to do individually. But the team aspect was about practice and it was about going through different situations and understanding one another, knowing what skill sets of each other were, knowing that this kid wasn't going to throw the ball 95 miles an hour from the outfield to home plate and cutoff men had to be in the right spot to be able to make the play that we wanted to. And I think if we, if we recognize those things, we can identify some similar conversations that we can have within the board if we're really going to be a team and work together. I think there's some piece of that that is about getting to know one another on a more personal level, understanding what our skill sets are, understanding what we can each provide for one another and making good decisions and making sure that, that we always keep our students in mind as we, as we make those decisions. I think that would be a huge benefit of a retreat if we can find the right thing to go through.
And if we can roll in dinner, that would be great. A little small request.
Do you all do last year? I was going to ask.
And I don't know, did we do a retreat last year? We did a retreat, but I.
We did.
Yeah, I think we came in and, I can't remember.
It was, it was wrapped into coming up with something for the superintendent search, I think. Wasn't it a precursor to that?
Actually, I think our retreat last year, did our retreat, did our retreat have to do with goals? Is that what we did? We asked, asked Brian in to come and we worked through goals and whatnot in here? That's what we called our retreat. I don't know that it was really a retreat.
Yeah, that's one of those meetings before board meetings.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. But I think that's what we, I think we identified it as the board retreat to do that.
Very well. I just wondered what you did.
Any other thoughts? I'll reach out to Brian Jordan, see what we can get, and then we can go from there. Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And then it will be upon us to respond to your email. So those who do not respond do not get a say.
Hey, I will respond if they're coming in before a board meeting because I want to make sure we eat something.
I'll just vote for him.
He'll vote for, Harold's voting for Chris. That's why he just lost your vote.
Okay, um, Dr. Cobb's is going to move into 6.02, COVID-19.
Yeah, so, um, we've had lots of conversations via the update about how we want to address. And we've talked about viruses in general. I mean, the, the flu situation in our community is, has been fairly significant. I think we're up to 140 identified cases of influenza A or B since December. That's pretty substantial. I think the difference, um, that we're hearing, and I went to Franklin County Emergency Management Conversation today to talk about COVID in general and, and what the plan is. And, and the question was asked is, we've had all of these conversations about, um, about COVID, but not much about the flu. And what I got was that the flu is a known commodity, that we kind of know its duration, we know its incubation period, we know that these things are going to happen, we know how you treat it, we know how we do all of these things, even though we see it, um, a lot, especially this year, that there's not, um, there is not an unknown at the same level of the flu as there is with, with the coronavirus. So, a lot of what they're, they're having conversations about is, what do we do to, to meet the unknown? And the reality of it is, is that we don't know what to do to meet the unknown because it's unknown. So we continue to do the things that, um, that we know combat viral activity. First and foremost, we have good hygiene. We may, we want to make sure, and we've been talking with our kids at schools, they are, they are, especially at the elementary levels, having hand washing times. Go wash your hands. We're all going to go wash your hands. We're going to use the bathroom. We're all going to wash our hands. We're going to do these things. We're going to, we're going to create good hygiene strategies. We're going to use, um, disinfectant and hand sanitizer and all those things as often as we can. From a cleaning standpoint, what we're doing, and, and I've got a list of, of all of the different juices we use to spray on whatever, uh, to, to disinfect. Um, one of them is called the Arsenal One Vindicator. Really, it sounds like it's going to kill everything. But these are, these are the types of things that we do every day. We, we, we make sure that we're wiping down all of the accessible surfaces, all of the touchable surfaces, student desks, um, water fountains, doorknobs, all of these things. We're making sure that these things that are in constant contact with our kids are being disinfected every night. And, and again, part of this is to, to make sure that we slow down or hinder the spread of any viruses, not just this one, but all viruses, including influenza, including colds, including all of these things, to try to help create a, a healthier environment for our kids. The, the biggest piece of this is that we continue to educate our kids on what good hygiene looks like. Um, and we talked about washing hands, but really, I think they, they did a, um, a poll and came up with data that less than 10% of our population washed their hands regularly. Nor do they wash them appropriately. That's somewhat alarming. But this is a part of where our job comes into play and making sure that our students understand the importance of doing that. We'll have some conversations with our food service, uh, coming up about what their reaction, making sure that, that we are, are keeping our food service, um, in a manner that is going to not, um, help spread, uh, any type of virus situations or any of those things. We're keeping surfaces clean, that we're, we're preparing the food for our kids and not, not allowing them to reach in there and take things, but we're handing it to them and making sure that we're sanitary in all of those different processes. The other piece that we do is something called a, it has a really weird name as well. That it has a, it's a, a, it looks like a Zamboni and all sorts. This is called a Total 360 Machine. And ultimately, it sprays this stuff all over the walls and creates kind of a sticky substance you didn't take off. And it, we've gone through every building multiple times now, but really it is a, a, a full-on disinfectant. It's not wipe down tables. It's, we're taking care of everything at this point. And so this, this machine is making its way building to building. They go through a building in a night, make sure that they get everything taken care of. It's total disinfectant. And it goes through all of these things and you can, if you're interested in seeing, you can see all the information from it. Uh, but then we load it up, take it to a different school, do it, do it two nights down the road or however long it takes us to get through it. And we continue to rotate around to make sure that all of our schools are going through this process, um, at least every other week, so that we have a deep clean every other week. And then we have the daily disinfectant of our custodians every night and every day. Say that again?
Do that regularly?
Yes.
That's not something new?
No. It's not, it's not some, it is new because we just purchased the machine this year. But we are doing it regularly now. Yep. So, um, we're doing, I think, the best that we can. There, there are a lot of things that are out there that are being discussed currently. Again, our intention at this point is to make sure that we continue to provide a great educational environment for our kids, one that is safe and healthy for them. We will continue to do so and continue to make sure that our custodial, uh, staff, our teaching staff, our administrative staff are ensuring that these places are, are, are disinfected for our kids. We're teaching them great habits and we're communicating great habits to parents and what we need to do. And when we identify that those things aren't happening, that we address them moving forward. So, that's kind of where we're at.
I assume facts would be, are they doing anything different in facts?
Oh, like, like our culinary classes at, at middle and high? You know, that's a really good question. And, and I don't necessarily know.
Child.
I know the answer. I, I will find out. I would guess that we have, we have continued to do things similarly than what we've done in the past. But I would, I also know that there is supposed to be a disinfectant of each station once they're done and preparing it for the next, for the next group, but.
And I'm not in favor of them, like, stopping cooking or anything. I just was wondering if.
No, I certainly think it's, it's worth a conversation with them to make sure that we are doing, uh, everything we can to monitor what happens in the cleanup of those stations, make sure that we're leaving that station, um, prepared for the next group that, that comes in. Absolutely.
For you all out there, there's 10 of us up here. Only one of us washes our hands. I just want that. No speed.
I'm pretty sure it's me.
But anyway, just so you know.
So, here, so here's the sad part of that, is that there's three out of, out of what would be 30 sitting right up here, which means there are 27 others that are not. Sad, sad. So, any questions about what we're doing, um, for these types of things? Please know, um, that, that we are all having conversations and continue to monitor through KDHE, through Kansas State Department of Education, through the Franklin County Health Department. We are a part of all of those teams constantly evaluating what's going on. We have a great nursing staff constantly feeding information to our health department. All of those, all of those teams are coming together to try to do the best that they can, um, in this environment that, that we have, we've been pushed into. So, um, again, the, the safety of our, of our kids is first and foremost, and we believe that the environment at school is, is as safe as it has ever been for them to be in.
Are parents doing a pretty good job of not sending sick kids to school?
Yeah, that's been something that we have put out there. Please don't send your kid if they're sick. We need to have some, some deeper conversations about, um, about attendance awards. We've had the conversation amongst our, amongst our administrative staff about, you know, we can still do this, but we also want to tell kids that just because you don't get an attendance award doesn't mean you did something wrong. Right? So, um, if you're sick, you're sick and you need to stay home. You need to take care of yourself. But there are some local entities that continue to provide attendance awards that, that really have a huge impact upon decision-making of parents. And, and that's probably a conversation that we need to have to make sure that we're, we're recognizing that this is probably not the time to send your kid to school, um, so that you can get an award at the end of the year. We need to take care of our kids. If they're sick, leave them home, let them get well.
Do any of the attendance awards affect any academic awards?
Nope.
No?
Nope. No, they, our, our, the attendance awards that we provide, uh, within USD 290 are, um, are very superficial for the most part. We recognize and some of them we do week to week, some of them we do month to month. It's just about, hey, we're really happy that you're coming to school and, and appreciate that you're coming to school. We, we try not to ever indicate that not coming to school is a, is a bad thing, but really promoting that coming to school when you're healthy is a great thing because we love to come to school. But within those conversations are, when you're sick, stay home, take care of yourself. We'll take care of your education when you get back or within that timeframe from, from wherever we're at. Harold, did you have a question?
Yeah, I think, I appreciate you, uh, helping to alleviate the fear. Because, uh, as you and I've discussed, uh, I do a lot of work in California. I haven't met a person yet that knows anybody with the virus, but I know, everybody I've talked to, including yourself, have been down with the flu this year. And so the flu's at this point in time is, is equally important as the virus is. So thank you for the maintenance staff and, and the admin team for taking a whole total picture of it and just not focusing on the virus, but you're focusing on the whole wellness and wellbeing of the student body. So, I think that's great that you're taking a holistic approach, uh, to cleaning, not just for the virus.
I, I appreciate that and I'll pass it along to our custodial maintenance staff. They work their tails off. They, they are tireless workers and they have a, a very tough task ahead of them, not only in cleaning our buildings, but adding this, this wrinkle into it during this time of year that is always kind of there with cold and flu season, but, but certainly heightened senses at this point. So, I'll, I'll pass that along and make sure that they're aware, the appreciation of our board for all their work.
Man, I'll give you an example from today, how scared people are of this. I went to get a new respirator for a job. You can't find a dust mask in this town.
Yep.
Everybody is sold out and on backwater.
Or toilet paper, apparently. I don't know. I don't know what's going on there, but Walmart is out of toilet paper. You might need to go to, uh, some other store.
There probably isn't any anywhere.
I've ordered thousands of masks for the hospital. I ordered thousands of them. They've cut me off. I can't order anymore till April 1st.
Other questions about where we're going with this?
No, I'm, it, it sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we are down to 6.03, board reports. Anyone's had any site council meetings, anything like that?
We had middle school site council last Wednesday. And, uh, the, the high point for me was that the sixth grade, uh, social studies team over at the middle school has been working very hard to meld standards-based grading with the traditional ABC. It, it's looking really good, their prototype. They've used it this year. They've used it with parents and explained it to them. And so I'm sure Mr. Stoltenberg will, will have a little presentation on that, but it's, it's, it's doable, is what I'm saying. And, uh, last Friday, went to the science fair over at Eugene Field. That was fun. Those kids did some really fun science experiments, so.
I had OHS site council last Thursday, um, and there was discussion about the student-led conferences, which are going on tonight. Um, and something that was nice about that is they have a, a post-session questionnaire for parents to fill out afterwards. In fact, I participated in that tonight, um, just to get feedback on what parents thought about the, the change in the conferences. And there was also, um, discussion about, um, the new, uh, activities director that was hired, um, and some excitement behind that and just his, his already involvement in things, even though he's not officially yet working for us. So it sounds like he's really excited to be here. And then last time, Kelly was here, she updated us all quite a bit on what was going on there, so. But it was, it was a good meeting as usual. Anyone else?
I had the Lincoln Site Council and, um, talked about, I'm going to start up a carnival they're wanting to do. We talked about Pastor Todd, but he, we talked about that here, um, with the Smile Award. Yes. And I think that was about it. I was also at the, was there something else? Oh, I was also at the middle school dance laser tag event recently. That was always entertaining, but I think it's just great that we have opportunities because it's always clear if you actually attend those things that students are looking for things to do. And, um, I think it's great when we provide opportunities for them to be there and not doing alternative things that we are not hoping for them to do.
Alright, um, we will move on. We do not need an executive session for personnel. We are moving on to the personnel section, though. 8.01 is the superintendent's contract. We did complete, uh, the superintendent's evaluation last meeting and, um, the board had consensus that we were moving towards, um, all established goals, uh, very, uh, very nicely and pleased with the direction the district is going, um, as a result of Dr. Cobb's hard work. In addition, uh, we recognize that, um, he does not do this alone, that it is the staff, um, administration and the employees of this district that work together to certainly make all that happen. Tonight, we do, uh, need to take action on his contract. We need to approve the continuation of the rolling contract for Dr. Cobb's, including years 2021, 2020, 21, and 2021, 22.
So I make a motion, we approve the continuation of the rolling contract, 2021, 21, 22, for Dr. Cobb's.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. Thank you, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you.
Looking forward to you continuing.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You all have been presented a personnel report. Is there a motion to approve said report?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And Harold, where are you on that?
He was there.
Were you there? Okay, alright, that passes 7-0. Thank you. We are down to announcements.
Alright, we're going to do announcements up here today for a couple of reasons. One, I think it's important, you'll see up there, elementary redesign visit was today, uh, and we had Jay Scott, uh, last week. I think sometimes as we are in it every day, we lose sight of maybe the amazing things that happen here. To watch these two come in that visit other schools all the time and watch them be in awe of our programming, watch them being in awe of what our district is and how it, how it operates and how it is different than, than other districts is, is pretty inspiring and really kind of a recharge to all of the things that, that it takes to make it happen the way that it does. But if you could have been here with Jay, Jay got buzzed by, um, the airplane, uh, from our aviation class. Josh has got a great video of it, which is pretty awesome. But, uh, you know, he came in, the airplane flies over his head and he's like, what the heck is going on out there? We got to go see this. So, we got to see some really awesome things. And, and as you start talking to him about what it is that, that we offer that other districts cannot and do not, um, again, it puts it into perspective, the amazing things that we do. And we had Tammy, um, here today looking at our elementaries. And again, I think, I think what is happening here from a, from an instructional standpoint and from a system standpoint is very different than what's happening in other districts. And I think that's something that we should celebrate and, and be proud of. This week is parent teacher conference week. It's happening all across. It sounds like you got to go today. Did you go today? You go on?
I couldn't, I, we had that meeting.
Oh, that's right.
So I'm going to do the drop-in tomorrow and then Lincoln is Wednesday night.
Good, good, good. You.
Today, for our mass.
Yep, so, we're, we're starting to see some of that, starting to see some different things within, um, our parent teacher conferences. But again, all of that is to try to, to become more involved, um, with our students and with our parents, make sure that they understand exactly what's going on. Spring break starts really on Thursday at about 3:10 for most of our kids. No school on Friday. Uh, and also on Thursday, we have state basketball in, in, uh, in Salina against Augusta. It has been, I think since 2015, um, since we've had a basketball team make it to the state tournament. So this is exciting times for us. None of the kids that are currently, uh, at Ottawa High School have seen a, a group of kids go to state. So this is a, a first for all of them there. And, and again, very. So, this is a first for all of them there, and again, very exciting. It looks like, if you're interested in, if you're not able to go to Salina, it looks like Fusion Bowling Alley is going to run a live stream of the game, so you can go there and eat and watch, which will be fun. We have a couple of other things happening, state championship for the chess team, which is not something that you hear very often, we've got, I think, six or seven kids going to state chess, you've seen some of that in the update, as we try to keep you guys updated on who's qualified for state, but that also takes place on Saturday in Emporia, and we have the Spring Band Concert tomorrow at the PAC at OHS. The other thing, and the last thing that we will talk about as we go, is I wanted to recognize Julie Dandrio for all of the work that she does, and she was recognized by KASB for being a member of the leadership team, and was sent, we were sent this yesterday. But again, all of the things that all of our board members, you guys don't get recognized near enough for the time that you put in, but Julie was recognized by KASB for going above and beyond, and being a part of that leadership group, and really bringing some of those things back, and experiencing them with you all, so congratulations to Julie. Thank you for all of your hard work and your dedication to our district and to our students, and we'll give this to you, take it home with you. Hey, that's all I've got for announcements.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still moved.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 7-0.